Call to order a meeting for the Normal Local Liquor Commission. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kuss?
Here.
Ms. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Nord?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Cummings?
Here.
Mr. Preston? Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
First order of business is approval of the minutes of the special meeting of March 29, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any changes or corrections? Please call the roll.
Ms. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Item four is 2021-2022 liquor license application for Cam Consultants LLC, doing business as Noors at 1730 Bradford Lane, Suite 200 in Normal, requesting a Class C beer and wine liquor license only.
Move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
I point out that any approval tonight would be conditional to a stipulation that the license not be issued until such time as we receive approved inspection reports from McLean County Health Department, Normal Fire Inspection Division, and the Normal Building Inspection Department, as well as a fully executed lease. Is there discussion on this item? Please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Ms. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye.
The item is approved. That's all our business for Liquor Commission tonight. A motion for adjournment, please.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Ms. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye.
We are adjourned from the Liquor Commission. We will start our meeting in about two minutes at the prescribed seven o'clock time. Call to order a meeting for the Normal Town Council for Monday, September 20, 2021. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kuss?
Here.
Ms. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Nord?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Cummings?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a number of people for public comment tonight. I'll just go very briefly over the rules that you're allowed. We'd ask you that you state your name for the record, your address if you so choose to do so, and you are limited to three minutes for public comment. And that's basically the rules. So our first speaker is Sue Clark.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am Sue Clark. I live in Evergreen Villas and I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of all the residents of the Villas. When we were apprised by Thai Hack, the developers, they intended to make changes to the external, the external building on the proposed new homes on the north side of Monterey Pine, the northernmost street of the community complex. All of us became very concerned about how the new proposal could affect property values and there would be a lack of consistency within the community. I mean-
Excuse me, does she have to wear a mask?
No.
It's very difficult to, you know, even-
I'm sorry. Sorry. A meeting was held between the residents and Thai Hack. The meeting afforded the dialogue between the two parties. The residents were free to speak, freely speak of our concerns and the developers defended their decision to make changes. At a subsequent meeting with the interim board, Thai Hack announced their intent to have a brick covering the entire building, mirroring the other homes within the community, and that patios in the rear of the buildings would be covered to align with the remainder of the homes. We have reviewed the new plans before you tonight and appreciate that Thai Hack listened to us and made our suggested changes to preserve the integrity of our community. In closing, on behalf of the residents, we respectfully request any changes be considered in the future be presented to us in a timely manner so that we can work together for the betterment of the Evergreen Villa community. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you tonight. My address is 1750 Two Connor Record in Normal. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul Harmon.
A little taller than Sue. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'd like to begin by thanking the staff, particularly Mercy and Greg, for all the help that they have been with regard to what has been going on. The end result of the changes that have been proposed for the buildings, they will be brick with a peaked roof on the back rather than just a flat surface on the back. And so that is an improvement. They will be somewhat compatible to the current buildings. They will not be of the same quality and they will be smaller, but they appear to be compatible. People would have been, we wouldn't have over thirty or forty people here tonight if the whole process had worked a little more smoothly with the developer who decided at one point to shut out their own appointed interim board on how this development was proceeding. And for that, I, I, I thank you for giving us time that really shouldn't have been needed if we'd all been working together on this. A couple of other issues. One is the additional off-street parking. There is really insufficient parking. Part of that, I mean, that's because of the way the plan was originally approved fifteen years ago. But the streets are narrow. There is no place when you have guests for people to park for most of the development. And with the reduction in size of lots on the north side of Monterey Pine and the reduction in the size of the buildings, it seems like there would have been an opportune time on this replating to have put at least a few off-street parking places on the north side. The other item that has been a great concern is the community building. I've lived there ten years. It was promised when we had ten or twelve buildings, units sold. We have fifty-three occupied. We still have no community building. This is the only spot in the entire subdivision that's designated for joint use by the tenants of the Villas. And therefore, we need to be able to work something out with the developer on how that property will be used. Our concern is simply this. When a same developer deciding not to build the clubhouse for various reasons in Spring Ridge, they put additional marketable housing units on that space and we cannot afford to lose the space for current tenants. So we want to work that out with the developers, come to a joint agreement on how that should be used. But some of us have been waiting ten, eleven, twelve years for this building to be built and it's about time we reach a resolution on that. Again, I'm sorry, I'm Paul Harmon. I live 1762 Locksboro Way, Normal, in the middle of Evergreen Villas. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike Flanigan.
Thanks for letting us speak tonight. My name is Patrick Flanigan and I also live in Evergreen Villas. My wife and I moved there in Evergreen in January of 2018. Evergreen Villas was marked as a senior community with quality stick-built units, a future community building, and a landscape park in the Nightcore Eastman. We chose our lot because we could have a little extra space in back and increase the size of our villa. We also liked the idea of a park next to us. Currently, we look at Nightcore monitoring equipment with concrete barriers, which is not a pleasant view, especially since we're supposed to have a park there. We bought out there in good faith that our community would grow with consistent quality Villas. Unfortunately, developers have decided to go a different direction, building smaller, modular units from homely homes. At our last two HOA meetings, the builder proposed building a four-story apartment building in the detention base, which previously showed on the original PUD, Nine North Villas. If they go through with that proposal, you will see a large group of Evergreen Villas senior residents here again. We're not for that at all. We are pleased the town staff, once again, Greg and Mercy, were able to work with the developers to address our concerns to keep the integrity of the community somewhat consistent with the original PUD. In closing, we are now satisfied with the developers' latest changes. Thank you.
Ruth Reinhardt would be our next speaker.
My name is Ruth Reinhardt. I live at 1763 Locksboro Way in Evergreen Villas. An issue that is also a concern in addition to all the things that have been brought up, and by the way, we do thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening, but we are concerned about the heavy trucks hauling loads of dirt, gravel, and cement on our existing streets to complete the subdivision project. We would strongly suggest that at least one temporary service entrance and exit be cut into the area from Beet Street. That would avoid damage to our existing streets. Actually, it's one big round street, but it's going to do a lot of damage, which we as homeowners are responsible for maintaining that street. So, once again, thank you so much.
Our next speaker is John Larkin.
Good evening. Thanks for letting us address. I'm going to talk about the Lowe's Travel Center. I'm here representing my family. I'm John Larkin at 17391 East 2475 North Road Hudson. Also own property at 1131 West North Town Road with my wife Lisa. And with me is my father, Paul, and my sister Kathy. So Paul and Kathy live at the house just to the north of the Lowe's, the future Lowe's truck stop. In a couple of years, it'll be a century farm. Dad has been on that farm all but, well, for ninety-four of those years that it's been a farm. So farming in North Normal, we're no strangers to development. Fifty-five, seventy-four, thirty-nine. Back thirty-nine, there were three alternate proposals for where the interchange could be. Two of them would have taken out Dad's house. We're thankful that the third one was chosen and it just split the farm. It didn't take the farm. So not here tonight to stand in the way of progress. We know this is an area that's due for development and while we may have chosen another neighbor, we understand that Lowe's is well-respected in the market space it's in. And all we want to do is make sure that we're good neighbors together. Here to advocate for two things. One regards the sign, the two-hundred-foot proposed sign, and the other is for a fence along the northern property. Let me address the fence first. The adage is, "Good fences make good neighbors." When your neighbor is a truck stop or a travel center that's bringing people in from all corners of the United States, it's especially nice to have a good neighbor with a good fence. There are four things we think the fence can provide. One is some screening, not necessarily from the security lighting package that the city's approved and meets all the code. It's more the truck lights and the cars moving in and out that would be shining back in toward the house and those kind of things. Second is sound. The travel center has a SpeedCo, which is a twenty-four-hour tire repair service. I'm sure that everyone has been able to hear the impact wrenches around Don Owens or other truck tire service places going. That at two in the morning can be disconcerting. So some kind of sound deadening provided. Probably most importantly on our list is security. Right now, Dad has retained one of the centuries-old hedgerows and it's mowed on both sides. It's a nice park-like setting. With the RV center right there, they're doing nice landscaping. People are going to go for walks. It'd be very natural just to keep on walking and walk up that park-like tree setting. We believe that a barrier to say, "Hey, this isn't part of the travel center," would be important. Just this last week, coincidentally, my sister came down and on the back porch was a gentleman sleeping there and he just wanted a cell phone charger. The door was locked and he was not aggressive or anything like that, but he had worked pretty hard to get all the way back to that porch. I can imagine when it's a five-hundred-foot walk to the porch, what kind of cellphone people we might have coming without some kind of barrier. And then the third is just trash. I farmed that thirty acres now and when it's a good south breeze, the cornstalks from that field blow right into the house and yard area. Soon that cornstalks will be replaced by napkins and coffee cups and all those other kinds of things as they blow. So the fence does those four things for us. There, Ms. Davidson indicated that the Lowe's folks had indicated maybe a four-foot chain-link fence could be provided.
Mr. Larkin, I'm going to ask you to sum up. You've gone four and a half minutes on your three.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, okay. So we'd ask, we'd advocate for a more substantial fence, a solid fence to provide the screening, sound barrier, and safety. And I'll just add one thing on the sign. As indicated by the group two weeks ago, they, the majority agreed that the sign was high. There are plenty of opportunities through billboards in Atlanta, Goodfield. There's blue signs indicate directions coming into town from the north. Plenty of opportunities for Lowe's to indicate for safety where guys should be able to exit without violating the code that you guys have established many years ago. Thank you.
And our final speaker is Sandra Wisdom.
I'm Sandra Wisdom, spelled with an O.
My apology.
And we are the new kids on the block. We just moved into Evergreen Villas in Janu-, on January the sixth of this year, in the middle of pandemic, in the middle of winter, and on that tragic January sixth day. For several weeks, I asked for a copy of the covenants, the rules, and the regulations governing Evergreen Villas. I did not receive a copy of those until the afternoon of the final walkthrough prior to going to the bank to sign away our name. Why is this important? Our neighborhood will change if these become individual family units rather than a fifty-five and over age community. And when that changes, new prospective buyers must receive a copy of those covenants, rules, and regulations prior to signing their name on the dotted line to live in that community. Families have to know that there are restrictions that we did not know until we already made our purchase. Things like no basketball goals and no swing sets and no playhouses that would affect a family. This is a planned community. At least that's what we thought it was. And those are the rules and they work for all of us. At the meeting with the developers and the residents, I spoke to one of the developers after the meeting and he said to me that, gee, you know what? These are going to be deeper lots, so these people can put up a gazebo or they can put up a fire pit if they want. That's not what our rules and regulations say. And my concern is that the marketing of the property and our villa will change and realtors will not know because they will not have had a copy of what the rules and regulations are. And families might find themselves with a knock on their door saying, "You gotta take that basketball goal down." We purchased there because brick buildings retain their value and require very little maintenance. The homes have the same exterior and that lends itself to a unified look. The neighborhood has great aesthetic value and I think the integrity of our neighborhood is at stake. It kind of feels like a rush job to me. Let's hurry up and have this meeting. Let's hurry up and get this done. Let's hurry up and we feel like we're always catching up. And as the new kid on the block who lived on five acres on the Macinon in the township, I'm just learning how this process works. I just kind of feel certain this is only one challenge we're going to face. We'll be ready for them. Thank you.
Thank you to all the speakers tonight. We move to the omnibus agenda. Items considered routine and we handled with one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. Ms. Cummings?
I just would like to be excused from any bills that I've incurred.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
D, I'm sorry, C, as in Charlie.
Ms. Lorenz?
D as in dog.
Mr. Nord? Good?
Got you. Move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Items voted on in the omnibus agenda, approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of September 7, 2021, a report to receive and file town of Normal expenditures for payment as of September 15, 2021. Please call the roll.
Ms. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. Those two items are approved. Item C is a resolution to waive the formal bid process and accept a quote from Koenig Body and Equipment Incorporated for the purchase and installation of snowpaw, I'm sorry, snowplow and salt-spreading equipment on two water department dump trucks totaling eighty-one thousand eighteen dollars and an associated budget adjustment.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
I had contacted staff for some clarification on this, in particular, to determine the rationale behind not going through the formal bidding process and also whether or not there was any phone calls made to ascertain because we, the formal bidding process, the competitive bidding process was waived on if anything was done to ascertain the reasonableness of the quote. Would Ms. Reese be able to respond for the record?
Sure. This particular item is asking council to authorize an expense where we can purchase some snowplow equipment, which would be additional equipment that we would install on some dump trucks that are utilized by the water department. The water department is an enterprise fund. So the reason why we are suggesting the canning equipment is because it would standardize with the public works equipment. And canning generally is available through a joint purchasing program, but this is purchased separately so we can get them on the water department fleet if council approves in advance of any winter weather that may come, might be coming this fall, winter, the next few months hopefully. So we want to be prepared and this allows, allows us, again with council approval, to have additional fleet on the street for snow removal operations.
And you have sufficient drivers with the necessary licensing to drive those snowplows?
Yes, all of our maintenance staff in Public Works and Water, Parks and Rec are, have their CDL licenses.
And the expectation is that the equipment will arrive in time for the first snow, God willing, and the creek don't rise?
That's our expectation.
Okay. Thank you.
Further on this item, Mr. Nord?
Thank you. I had asked when the last time was that we purchased this type of equipment to be able to get a gauge as to if the price is in line. When was the last time we purchased it?
Let me take a look. I don't recall. Let me pull up that email that I sent.
Oh, I've got it here. It was 2007. So that's over fourteen years ago when we last purchased this equipment. The response that you gave for why it's in line is because of general inflation that has occurred since then, which, you know, when I look at the purchasing policy, which anything over twenty-five thousand dollars and above needs to go through the purchasing policy. This is an eighty-one thousand dollar purchase. We're not bidding it out. The exemptions that the policy, that I didn't create, the council before me created, states here the reasons for exemptions. One, it's a sole cert, it's a sole source purchase and only one known supplier is available for that item. Well, the items that we're buying, these are things that you can get from other manufacturers or from other vendors. or from other vendors. This company does not make this equipment, so that exemption does not apply. Another exemption is redundant purchase. It says the purchase of a second item that is the same or substantially the same as an item that had been recently competitively bid. I don't think 14 years ago just is, is, meets the definition of recently bid. And as far as the items being compatible with the other town equipment, the town equipment that was purchased before was in 2007. You know, I believe that the attachments will go back and forth, but the equipment that we're putting on these trucks likely will not. You know, wet kits hook into the transmission, the, the last vehicles were in 2007. The two vehicles that we're going to put this on, one of them is slated to be removed or to be replaced in just a couple of years. It was bought for $75,000. We're putting $40,000 worth of equipment into something that's already depreciated. So, you know, I just don't understand why this wasn't competitively bid. According to the purchasing policy, we don't have an exemption that allows us to waive this. So either we ignore the purchasing policy, and then the purchasing policy becomes very arbitrary and, you know, we can't, well, the citizens can't rely on it to be used because there's no exemption allowed. So I'm not supportive of this. I would like to see this come back to council with it bid out because I've got no justification to go back to our constituents and say that we know this is competitive. And also, as I do think the town has other options to plow streets during one of the snow events, we all got emails and calls about the Constitution Trail being plowed before our streets were, and we learned that, you know, Parks and Rec has got equipment. So, you know, we could have them focus on the streets before they go and do Constitution Trail if that's necessary.
Ms. Reese, go ahead.
Sure. It might not have been explained in this report, the Koenig equipment is available through a joint purchasing program called Sourcewell. I believe the procurement policy does talk about joint purchasing opportunities. I'm looking at Brian Day, and so that is accurate. So that's, it is through joint purchasing, so that is why it's not put out for formal bid. The other thing in terms of, Mr. Nord is accurate, in terms of some of the challenges we faced with some of the snow events last year, and we did address at that time what our snow removal practices are. Council is aware that Parks and Rec is equipped to remove snow, and they have different obligations initially. They're, they focus initially on removing snow from surface parking lots because when we have a snow ban, that's where we direct people to park if they're no longer allowed to park on the street. So Parks and Rec covers parking lots first, and then we have discussed at the staff level what modifications and improvements can we make for this upcoming winter season. Every, just like everything we do, we try to critique what we did and how can we do it better next time. And so we have a plan to focus more attention at, if needed, on residential streets. We have a pretty good handle on the arterial streets and collector streets. The residuals are where we ran into a little bit of a challenge last winter with some of the snow events. So trust me, Parks and Rec will be out there, as will hopefully Water.
Isn't it also true, Ms. Reese, that the equipment that Parks and Rec uses is not suitable for street work?
Yeah, it's definitely different. They don't have dump trucks equipped with the snow removal equipment. They have pickup trucks and sometimes three-quarter ton trucks, but it is a little bit different, so they can sometimes go in tandem with the dump truck. But yeah, that's, now we're going beyond my expertise talking about how the trucks will address snow removal, and I've got the experts behind me, but.
And don't we use a smaller snow blower, not like a home snow blower, but a snow blower or a brush attachment to do the trail?
In certain sections of the trail, it is true. In some of the wide open spaces, like along a rab road, there, there sometimes, depending on how much snow there is, sometimes it does require a pickup with a plow. And that is, that is a walk to school route, so it is important that the trail be cleared in that particular area.
Further on this item? Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. Once, so the, if I continue on the thought line of joint purchasing, we've seen that a lot in different equipment here in the town over the years. And so for those who are watching at home or here in the audience who don't know what a joint purchasing program is or why it matters in this case, that helps us ensure that there's favorable pricing than just going off onto the retail market. That's still an accurate assessment of that? Correct. Okay. So the town uses that when we purchase equipment. Joint purchasing agreements helps ensure that we're not just going and paying retail at the town when there isn't the best situation for competing bidding process like we are here. Also in the packet, you guys talked about the compatibility of equipment. We were talking about the ability to put equipment on different vehicles and, and not necessarily the, the, how old each equipment was and how long it would last, but the ability to take a plow and put it on different equipment because it's the same manufacturer, same connections and the like. Is that?
I believe that's accurate, yes.
If we, if staff needs to weigh in, they can. So one of the advantages here is rather than having a hodgepodge of different plows from different manufacturers that only work on particular trucks, we have equipment that works on all of them. And so that if a piece of equipment were to break or we reduced our fleet size, that snowplow equipment then could be fitted on any one of the other vehicles rather than us, again, having a hodgepodge of different equipment. And so there's actually an economies of efficiency here that we want to make sure that we take advantage of so that we can keep our trucks, as many of them as possible, out on the street plowing snow, which is what everybody here, I think, wants us to be able to do. Thanks.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you to, a couple of points. As far as, you know, us buying from this manufacturer, the last time was in 2007. That equipment has changed. This may not even be the same type of equipment we had before. But for fleet purchases, and I'm sure we could bring up Public Works or someone else that deals with that, they could have put in the specs, fleet specs, so that way parts are interchangeable, you know, very common for that to happen, so we don't have to worry about a snowplow only being used for that particular truck and can't be used on anything else. But for the joint purchasing, I'm glad you brought that up. Was this item in our current budget?
No, Mr. Nord. That's why we're asking for the budget adjustment. That's the second, that's the very end of the motion on the table.
Okay. So according to the joint purchasing, which I've got it printed right here, in order for it to qualify as joint purchase, the purchase of the item must be included in the currently approved annual budget. It's not.
That's how we avoid coming to council. An item that's purchased through joint purchasing program and is budgeted does not come before council. We can move forward without council approval. This one, we're coming to council for your approval because it is not a budgeted item.
Sure. So then it doesn't qualify as joint purchasing as an exemption in the purchasing policy. Now, the other piece.
I don't believe that's accurate.
That's inaccurate, Mr. Nord.
Well, I've got it right here if you want to read it.
We understand how you're interpreting, but I don't think that's an accurate interpretation.
Okay. Then the last point is, this is $81,000. We did not bid this out. You know, we've got companies locally that may have been able to bid on this. You know, so I've put my, well, I've said before that we need to bid things out, especially if there's local options. We did not bid this out, and I don't believe that the purchasing policy allows for us to do it. And 2007 was the last time we did it. We have no justification to go back to our constituents and say that we bought this responsibly. So therefore, I cannot support this. If you bring it back with competitive bid, different story. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
I believe my second part of the question got overlooked. To ascertain whether or not the price was reasonable, did the staff make follow-up phone calls to determine the reasonableness of the price, and can you report on that process?
I don't know that I can report on the process. We contacted Koenig to check on the price because it was available through the joint purchasing program to, and I think your inquiry was whether or not we've checked recently, and the answer was yes, we contacted them recently.
Okay.
Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. Resolution is approved. Item D is a resolution authorizing adoption of a Medicare Advantage insurance benefit for post-65 retirees and covered spouses.
I'd like to move this item. Thank you.
Ms. Lorenz?
Thank you. I pulled this item only because health benefits is a significant cost to our organization, and I just want to make sure that I fully understand it. I'm glad to see that this one has come through with a reduction in the plan's cost, so that's good. But I was wondering if you could speak to the total cost, even with the reduction, the total cost that this plan is to the town? And I wasn't sure if I was interpreting the page 49 correctly, so that's, that's what I wanted clarification on. That's where it's got a table and the number of retirees and spouses, and then a total.
Right. I guess I'll have to ask Human Resources Director Jenny Keer to come forward and walk through the table because I didn't, I didn't look at it closely, so I don't want to give you the wrong number. So what you're asking for is what the premium expense is, what the cost of the town is for this benefit? Is that what you're asking?
What is the cost to the town for this benefit?
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. So, so just to walk you through, and I appreciate your patience on this chart, we've got a lot of different quotes here kind of all listed out together. You'll have noticed on the, on the highlighted column there, the UHC Group Medicare Advantage Program, the $107.82 combines with that 220 figure, so the total premium that we're looking at is that, is that 327.82 number. So essentially, that rate is split in half for the town Medicare eligible employees and the town itself. So that's split right down the middle for any town retiree. For spouses, there is a cost share. It's a 20% cost share of that total amount that is paid by the town. 8% is picked up by the spouse. I do not have the overall budget impact for the entire year. I can tell you that in terms of the savings in the 2021 fiscal year, it's amounting to around $24,000 for the remainder of the year, so for months, April through December. We're looking at right around $88,000 in total savings, and that's town total savings.
Okay. So if I understand correctly, then when you do the math of the 327 times the 100 retirees and spouses, that's where you come up with roughly the $393,000?
Exactly. Yep, that's looking at total premiums. You're exactly right.
Okay. So that essentially is the cost to the town?
That's the cost of the town and retirees. So that's the total.
That's the part that gets split in half, or 80/20?
Precisely.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, good to know. Thank you for walking me through that. I just wanted that clarification. Thank you. That's all I had.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. For the retirees that are getting this insurance, do any of them get it at no charge?
There's a very select group, and those are only, that's, it's part of a public safety employee benefit agreement where if you are a public safety employee, police or fire, and you're injured catastrophically in the line of duty, it's, it's within the Illinois Insurance statute that your insurance would be paid at 100% for, for your lifetime and for any of your dependents on the plan. So there are, there's a very, very small group. There are two at this point that have their premiums paid at 100% because of that statute. It's referred to as PISIBA.
Okay. Otherwise, what percent do the majority pay?
50%.
50%?
Correct.
Is that comparable with, with what the private sector offers?
Well, I couldn't speak to the private sector necessarily, but I can tell you that it is a common practice among public sector clients and public sector entities to offer a retiree cost share. It's, it's, it varies between, you know, percentages in terms of the coverage, but it's not uncommon for that to, for that to happen.
Now, the claims for this package, does it go through the town's self-insurance?
No. And that's, that's really the beautiful part of a Medicare Advantage program is essentially it's a fully insured program where we will still contribute towards the premiums, but we, we will not encounter those claims within the self-infunded, self-insured plan. So those are being paid by Benastar.
Okay. And I had asked how much the commissions were to the, to Horton, the provider, and you, or Ms. Reese had mentioned that they were $21.38 per person per month. And when you do the math, that comes to a commission of just over $29,000. There's a statement in the write-up that says staff recognize the importance of conservative stewardship of public monies, something that I wanted council to understand when this came before council for the insurance brokerage. The other vendors that we did not get the numbers for that bid on this said that they would have done this for no commission.
Mr. Nord, would you, I know what you're trying to say. Would you keep it focused on this Medicare Advantage plan and not bring up the previous action?
Sure. So when, when there's text in here that says staff recognize the importance of conservative steward, stewardship of public monies, I will remember how we got to this point. I'm glad that the costs are going down, but there's more to it than just this particular cost. Thank you.
Further on this? Ms. Smith?
With this change, the retirees are actually gaining some additional coverage because of the structure of Medicare Advantage and the inclusion of dental and vision and, and some other supplemental services, and they can do away with their Medicare supplement policies. Is that correct?
That's accurate, yes. They have not had access to those ancillary benefits before. The additional benefit was, was hearing aid coverage as well. They did not previously have, that they will have for this cheaper plan.
Awesome. Thank you.
Further? Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The resolution is approved. That concludes our omnibus agenda. We move to general orders items, the first of which is a resolution conditionally approving the re-subdivisions of lots 48 through lot 55 and 82 through 86 in the Evergreen Village Planned Unit Development, PUD, second edition subdivision.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion on this item? Ms. Cummings?
I, I feel like we should say a word or two. To begin, first of all, I want to thank all of you who are here concerning this tonight, and even listening to your comments can show that we can have productive and positive dialogue to make our communities better. There was so much shared here tonight, but I certainly want us to walk away with a few things for the future. One, we are here to, to do, deal with supposedly just a minor change, and that's what we hope that we get out of it, which is going from 13 to 12 units. I know there were some concerns about the quality of the builds and questioning of what it would look like, and I don't know if you can answer this or not, and I would, I know the renderings we had initially were from some years ago, and they were first developed quite a while ago. My, my thoughts to some of that is, you know, we know that, especially even in this market post-pandemic, some materials aren't as easily available. Some of the brick that was probably purchased then may not be available, and I think it would behoove to share, even with those things, that though they seem so minor in your world, it's, it's, it's a bigger thing to those who live in that, that area. And so I think we also learned being able to communicate and how to communicate with the residents. I think that's even something we can take away so that everyone feels a part of the process. And I think that's, that's key, is making sure everyone feels like they were a part of what was to come next. come next. And especially considering it's a PUD, and I know we share this a lot, that trying to maintain, and I think many people have said it, the integrity within a PUD is that consistency above any other place. That's what makes a PUD different. It is very strict on what's to be expected, is what's going to be built and putting that in place. I certainly hope, and I just want to bring us back to understanding what we are going to do tonight, but I'm hoping that it will further conversation, further conversations will be had on some of the desires, and if any changes wants to come, that will arise, they will have to go back through the process. I know what was shared, a couple of things that have been shared before, is the community building, and I do hope, because that is a part of the original plan, that that does go forward and that gets fulfilled, and it seems like many of you have that still on your plate and a hope and a desire for that. So just to know that we heard you here from our seats, and we support, you know, your view and your vision of where you live, just wanting you to know, our action tonight is really, is surrounding the reduction from the 13 to the 12. I guess they can share a little bit about, I know they've covered some of your concerns, but the quality or the changing of some of the products, which will make sure, or maybe ensure, that you're going to see some consistency as close as possible even during these times.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm trying not to be too redundant of my colleague. I guess I'm going to go out on a limb and say all the residents that are here from Evergreen Village are probably intimately familiar with the latest changes. I see some people shaking their heads. So you're aware, I won't go down that path. First, I guess, just want to say thanks. Haven't seen the gallery, and the council chambers is full in quite a while for a host of reasons, but I appreciate that residents feel confident and comfortable coming to council chambers and being able to voice their concerns here in the open. And we do listen, and we appreciate that greatly. Appreciate the developers being here as well and representing a viewpoint. I understand it was a bumpy ride to get where we are. I do want to say publicly, it's rare where we have people on two different sides of an issue coming up here and saying we got to a point that we're at least more happy with and materially happy with, and I will put that on the victory board, because that's usually not how it goes in here, and we usually have to make a decision between one side and the other. So I'm ecstatic that you guys have, although as bumpy as that might have been, it got to a place where everybody seems to be happy for now. For my education, all we're doing tonight is 13 to 12.
Correct.
And that any other, and that we're conditionally approving that based on some future action relative to the community center.
Correct.
To addressing some of the current concerns of the folks here, and that any other changes would have to go back through the PUD process, through planning, then back to council, and plenty of opportunity for public input.
That is correct. Anything that gets filed for the Planning Commission, for example, if there's a change in plans for the community building, does require going to the Planning Commission and a public hearing process, and residents would be notified.
Awesome. Great. Thank you.
Ms. Lorenz, and then Mr. Preston.
Okay. I have a lot of concern about this item, and it probably stems from the fact that I spent a number of years on the Planning Commission, and I am really shocked that this is not going through the Planning Commission. And I know that the specific item is to just go from 13 to 12, and that indeed does seem minor. However, we've heard numerous emails and then many more voices tonight that makes it clear to all of us that there are many issues going on with this PUD right now, some of which are things that have not materialized, like a park, like a common building, although I kind of hear some this or that about, well, maybe we don't want the common building. After all, we'd rather have some parking, you know? So, but there's that category of things that haven't materialized that they thought were going to materialize. And then there is some new imagination or reimagining of this PUD, and that happens a lot over a period of time. So I can appreciate the developers. We've seen this before, when neighborhoods need to evolve to, you know, meet a newer market need than perhaps where it started. That being the, this whole issue of the, whether it's a senior unit, a senior living facility or neighborhood or not, and the enforceability of that. I think these things are all issues, that by virtue of the developer coming forward and saying, "I'm ready to do some more work," that in my experience, these would have been things tangential to the 13 to 12 that still would have gotten discussed and put through the Planning Commission. And to allow these folks the opportunity that the Planning Commission process affords, which is lots of input on the record, not all these meetings that are, you know, done just between the developers and the neighborhoods, although that, you know, is nice of them, it's the whole reason why we have the Planning Commission process. And I am just really concerned that we have deviated from that, and I don't know if this is a possibility. I'd like to kind of plant this as an idea right now, not a motion, but if it's possible to send this back to the Planning Commission and really, really work through the issues that are related to the fact that the developer is wanting to move forward with more development. Things like the park, is it or isn't it? Things like the common building, is it or isn't it? Things like the screening of the utilities. I'm surprised that hasn't been enforced at this point. I mean, we have a history of being vigilant about screening utilities, you know, shrubbery or fencing. Why hasn't it happened? I just see a lot of, a lot of holes in this, and I really, really am concerned about going forward. That's all I have to say for now. I might want another swipe at the apple later.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor, and I'm happy to defer if staff or anybody else has remarks in response to Ms. Lorenz's comments, because mine were not pertaining to that. But assuming nobody does, I'll take back before. I want to echo the thanks that we've heard from other council members up here to all of you who came and spoke, and the many more who came as a sign of support for the neighborhood, for Evergreen Villas. Thank you for being here. Thank you for speaking, for those of you who did, and we certainly hear that. I would venture to guess that the passion and the enthusiasm and the interest with which the neighborhood and the residents of Evergreen Villas took up on this issue is the reason why, or at least one of the major reasons why the developer came back and made changes, both with regards to the brick and the covered patio areas in the back and the gables on the roof lines. And I think that is just one more example tonight of seeing how, when people feel strongly about something and they, you know, organize within their neighborhood, that it actually, you know, can lead to, can lead to some real positive change. I would also like to acknowledge that while not forced to, the developer did make changes that were in line with what the neighborhood had expressed concern over, and I do think that's noteworthy, and thank you to the developer for taking that approach, because clearly that is something that had been felt strongly by the current residents. I, I'm going to simmer on Ms. Lorenz's comments, as that's something I wasn't planning on talking about, but for the time being, thanks to the neighborhood, thanks to the developer, and overall with what we are talking about tonight. I hope that this is viewed by everyone as a, as close to a win-win compromise as can recently be expected at this point in the confines of tonight's conversation. Thanks.
Thank you. I just have a few questions and a reminder, what we're doing here tonight, which did go through the Planning Commission, is a re-subdivision of lots, and we're really not making a determination one way or another on some of the issues that have been brought up and concerns of the residents in that area. So my question goes back, and this is more for information, I'm not trying to point fingers at anybody in this. In the PUD process and the PUD that we have approved for Evergreen Village, is the developer in violation or non-compliance at this point?
Just one, we'll respond to that, Mayor, just one note of clarification. This particular agenda item is, we're considering it a minor change, which qualifies it for expedited review, so it came directly to council, not to plan. So this item, the re-subdivision, did not go to the Planning Commission? The other items that would be on the table, if the developer wanted to change the plan, for example, change the community center from a building to a pavilion or something, that would require going back through the process and amending the plan. And then back to your question about, is the developer not in compliance with the PUD? I'll defer to Mr. Day.
Right. And we are in the middle of kind of one of these gray areas where a PUD is in the process of being built out. Granted, it's been a while, it's been taken a while since a number of PUDs that we've approved have taken a while since 2008, but, so there's no hard and fast deadline saying you have to reach this, you have to reach this, they have to reach this. They've got latitude as to determine when certain things get built out within the PUD plan. In this case, we put that condition of addressing the community building in there, because we've hit the point where now the developer is going to be at the end of building all of the profit-generating amenities, and the only thing that'll be left would be the public amenities that won't be generating profit. And so we're concerned that, we don't want that to be forgotten about or not gotten back to, which is why we've got the provision in there that that has to be dealt with as a condition of this plat here. So either the community building has to be built, or they have to go back to Planning Commission with some other alternative. So there would be Plan Commission action in that case. With respect to the 55-year-old and up or the senior restrictions, that wasn't in the original PUD, and so there's nothing that Plan Commission would have any authority to go back and require it now. That would have been in the original, and that is generally not something that the town gets involved with at the PUD level for senior living. That's generally handled through private covenants. If we were going to do, some communities have senior living PUDs, but you've got to have very stringent rules as to what that is, because as soon as we approve something like that, we're now in the enforcement game, and we're responsible for figuring out what happens when somebody 45 years old buys a house. So that wouldn't have been something that we would have jumped into in the original PUD. So with respect to everything else, I believe they are going to complete all the other requirements of the plan, so there shouldn't be any violations of the PUD plan, to my understanding.
Well...
Another thing I'll mention, Mayor, and this maybe goes back to more of Ms. Lorenz's comments, but I don't know that it's, and maybe this would be more of a Greg Trummel question, but I don't believe it's unusual to not have all the amenities built into the PUD until it's actually built out. So I'm thinking of a couple of other planned unit developments in town that don't have the trail complete or the building in yet, so I think that's where we're at with this PUD.
And I understand fully well that, you know, given what's happened since this PUD was approved and build-out started, that there have been some pretty dramatic things that have happened nationally to our economy as a result of a recession and a pandemic that it makes it hard for a developer to say, "I'm going to build X amount of properties, and this project will be finished." You know, it's more of a market-driven issue. I understand that. Are there other issues in this that are, that have trigger points? You know, we've heard landscaping, we've, of utilities, we've heard parking. Are there triggers on those items?
I believe in term, and Mr. Day, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that other outstanding issues are landscaping around a NICOR utility easement, and then, of course, the community building, which is the most significant and impactful, probably, in terms of the entire development. So, and then the aesthetics of the actual dwelling units, that has been a discussion point, and I think that generally has been resolved.
Thank you. Mr. Nord?
Thank you. Thank you. Isn't another issue, the water retention basin, and possibly the developer relocating that and putting structures on that?
I don't know if that's a, I understand that that's been a subject that the developer has mentioned as maybe would like to do in the future, is build on that, but that's not part of this plan.
Okay. Because we've had somebody give public comment about that, and also building a multi-story building, so there are more things looking to happen with this PUD. So I completely sympathize with Ms. Lorenz, that there's a lot going on, you know, and it seems like town staff made the decision that this could be expedited, that it was a minor change, that was a staff decision?
Right. Correct. Typically, it's not uncommon to go from, you know, a certain number of lots and modifying, in this instance, from 13 lots to 12 in a planned unit development. That is not unusual to be considered a minor change and come back to you. Staff, if certainly with support, if council wants to send everything back to Planning Commission and have them consider everything all at once, that's absolutely, you're prerogative to do that. This just coming before you to go from, all the developer has asked for, to be clear, is just go, and what you're taking action on is going from 13 to 12 lots.
Sure.
Mr. Trummel can respond to the, I guess, the idea of a multifamily unit?
Before he responds to that, my thought is, the changes that are here right now, it seems like the residents have kind of come to some accord with the developer, which I'm grateful that the developer and the residents came to an agreement with these changes, but there are more involved in this PUD, which they need to be a part of, more than the council needs to be a part of. They need to come to an agreement on that. So with that in mind, I do think that staff missed the mark on letting this be expedited. You know, if you see that there's a lot of community engagement in an issue, I would like to see it go to a process where the community has more options to be involved. You know, they don't have a public hearing and things like that, and all those issues could get hashed out before they come here. But in the, what we're asked to approve tonight, point 2.2, it says that the execution of an agreement with the town, that the application, that any application to amend the PUD to change the community building is set forth in the PUD, would be filed, blah, 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 but that the town manager is authorized to execute that agreement. So are we being asked to relinquish the ability for us to represent folks if they disagree with what the community building is going to be, and we're giving that authority to you?
No.
Because it says that we're authorizing the town manager to make that decision.
All that is doing is setting deadlines. It's not what anything is going to be. They're not going to say, "This is what the community is going to be in this agreement." All this is going to do is, the developer has 90 days to come back and say, "We're going to file, either we're going to do something else with the community building and file that application in the Plan Commission, or here's the deadline for when we're going to build the community building." It's not setting out any type of decisions over what the land is.
So that community building will still go through the Planning Commission and come back to the council if the residents have issue?
If it changes, yes. If it doesn't, then they'll just have to build the community building according to the deadlines, but if they're going to change it at all, then that'll have, that gets triggered by filing that application with the Plan Commission. by filing that application with the planning commission. So if you were to send this back to the planning commission, the only question before the planning commission would be the exact same question that is before the council tonight, is the 13 to 12.
So why hasn't that community building decision been discussed and included?
In what?
In tonight, in what's before us tonight. I mean, it seems like we're approving something before the discussion and agreement has already happened.
We're not. I mean, essentially, this, there is no trigger right now in the PUD that would say, after a certain number of units are built, or after a certain period of time, that the community building has to be built. This action actually puts into writing, obligates the developer with the town to identify the fact that if you want to amend this plan, then you have to do it by a date certain, and then follow up with the construction date by a date certain.
Okay, so then, if I understand it correctly, then, if the developer doesn't settle on this community building, what we're approving tonight is not approved?
Correct.
Okay, so they, so then he has to do that by November 1st of 2022?
Of 2022.
Okay, so within a year.
This puts into writing and identifies a date where the developer has to make an amendment if they want to do something other than the originally approved community building. And that also establishes a construction timeline. Both of those right now are open-ended, and it's to Ms. Reese's point before about amenities and PUDs, they do tend to appear and get constructed toward the tail end of a development. Again, I think the more you have in the way of homeownership, establishing of an HOA and that type of thing, so that when essentially that improvement is done, some agreement was almost identically done the same way. 375 of the homes were built, and then the community building was built at the tail end. Could give you countless examples in that regard, whether that's right or wrong, but again, the fact tonight, there's not a current trigger in this PUD to say, here's when the building has to be built. And quite honestly, we've seen PUDs where they don't finish, and they just, the developer says there's no demand, there's no market, and they walk away. I don't think that's the desire here at all.
Okay, well, thank you, I'm glad that we're adding that timeline to it. And to the residents that spoke, I completely understand your concerns. You know, I live just on the other side of Prairieland, you know, same developer did our, did our neighborhood. And yes, you know, we've got the same restrictions, you can't put up a basketball court, you know, we're two-story homes, families, you know, our kids can't have a basketball court. The process to change that, once it leaves the developer's hands to yours, is monumental. We've tried, and we, and we still can't do it. So, you know, knowing that there's rules and regulations, that's something that's kind of like buyer beware, you know, your realtor, the people have to share that information. I don't know that the town can get involved in that. We've had the same discussions you've had. As far as, you know, your concern about it being modular, you know, or prefab homes versus stick-built, I know the difference between that. So I respect those concerns, but it does seem like the developer is putting some brick on there, and you guys are okay with it, it's going to look similar, and hopefully the prefab that they do is going to look similar, because the prefabs from years ago look completely different than the stuff that they're doing now. And I don't know if the town's got any control over that, do we?
We do, yes. Any, yeah, any construction fabricated offsite, our building codes all have provisions for qualified third-party inspections. In fact, Homeway Homes is 25 minutes west down 74. It's not uncommon for us even to send staff over to observe their construction practices during, while they're being, while they're being built, so.
Yeah.
No concerns in that regard.
Yeah, yeah, and as far as access on Beach Street, you know, that is right behind there. Is there anything that the developer needs to do? I mean, is he able just to use Beach Street and just go up over the curb and, or even cut his curb or put boards down like a lot of construction does?
I don't want to speak, I know Mr. Otto's out of town tonight, not going to profess to be the engineer, but we have taken steps like that in the past. Now, I will say too, is that there is a, at the northwest corner of the development, there's an entrance to the entire subdivision where very little traffic would have, they have to traverse through Conifer and Lace Park and all the other homes that are already built. However, that is, that's how homes and subdivisions get built. They do drive past one another as additions develop further in, but this, this is really well situated to avoid having construction traffic drive through what I would call the developed portion of the development right now.
Okay, good, and, yeah, so thank you to all the residents that reached out, you know, I appreciate that, that you got involved. The more that the community get involved, gets involved, I think the better a community we actually become, so thank you.
Before we get too far away from your original comment, though, you started off with, Mr. Nord, with comments about apartment building, multifamily building, and you've raised a couple of times in emails and conversation about the detention basin, so I would like to take a moment to get accurate information out on that. So, Mr. Trummel, can you address that?
Yeah, so, nothing has formally ever been filed in that regard, you know, there's been some discussions, and quite honestly, I think the developers had discussions with the homeownership even in advance of staff. Again, nothing has been filed with us publicly. We have been quite honest with the developers, saying that will be a challenge, you know, to deviate drastically from the plan. The other thing I would mention is that currently where the remaining, actually, I think there's, I think there's two or three triplex buildings left to be built in that area where that basin is at right now, but that basin needs to stay there, because it is supporting development right now, and that's temporary. There is a plan for, and again, I'll, I want to be careful about getting too far in the engineering weeds, but there is plan for a larger regional basin in this area that will displace this basin, this is temporary. So nothing's going to be constructed there until a bigger detention situation is sorted out in that area of town.
And to be clear, if the developer did have an interest in doing that, A, I would hope that the lesson's been learned about communicating with the residents of this, of the neighborhood, first. B, it would require a change to the planned unit development, and it would have to go to the planning commission, and it would have to go through a public hearing process.
Since you brought up-
Mr. Nord, I'm going to ask you to hold that for just a second, you've hit your 10-minute limit, and I'm going to go to Ms. Smith, and then I'll come back to you.
If I can attempt to bring us back to tonight, the vote is simply to change the original plan to cut out some triplex units, because according to the communication I had, residents aren't attracted to being the middle unit, and, and so the duplexes are more saleable. And as, as the mayor pointed out, the original planned urban development was approved in 2008, and the residents have, in their community, someone who was involved in that process back in 2008, so I'm sure he can recount chapter and verse for how we got to the final design. But now, we're simply looking at an opportunity for the developer, after factoring in residents' feedback, to insist upon holding to standardizing the look of the community and holding the property values. That's all been incorporated, we're simply looking at this process, we're not updating the planned urban development, the process is in place for that to occur when needed, and there's now a trigger in here. So with that being said, I'd like to call the question.
We have a motion to call a question, do I have a second?
I have one.
And we have to take, correct me, parliamentarian, we have to take a vote on that, and we need a supermajority, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
We need a supermajority?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
No.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
No.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
I'm going with the majority here, no. We're going to continue the conversation. Mr. Nord?
Since you brought up the water retention, the regional one, is this the one that's in the budget that's like a million dollars in our budget?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so my thought with that, because I want to get it on the record for this, I want that to go through the planning process, I want the residents and the taxpayers to hear if we're going to be using tax dollars to relocate a water retention basin from that neighborhood, and then make those lots then profitable lots for the developer, because that's essentially what we would be doing if taxpayers are going to fund for, fund this entire regional-
I think we'll move on from that, because-
Regional retention, so.
We're not here to, we're not here to talk about detention, I understand your concern.
You brought it up, so I, so I'm done, thank you.
Further on this item?
Aye.
Ms. Lorenz?
Thank you, from my second swipe at the apple. Maybe you've all had a chance to think about putting it back to the planning commission, I'm going to come to that in a moment. I want us to think about the age restriction piece, because if my memory serves correctly, I was actually on the planning commission in 2009 when this thing came forward, and I remember seeing and talking about it being age-restricted. I don't know if age was put in there, but it was referred to as age-restricted. That's how these people bought into this place, that's how the covenants were developed, that's how the place was laid out without sidewalks, and for places for people with, you know, young children in strollers and bicycles. It's been laid out with probably a little bit more narrow streets that would not really accommodate buses if that was needed to transport to school. So, you know, if that's not enforceable, that was kind of a miss on our part, that that was discussed at least publicly that way, and it was certainly a miss on the part of the people who purchased, thinking that they were going to live in a certain environment. So that's an issue that I think needs to be addressed, if not tonight, sometime in the very near future, because whether this, I mean, assuming this goes forward, if not tonight, maybe through the planning commission, if I had my way, there's still going to be 12 units built, and some of those units may be sold to people under 55, with 10, 11, 12 year olds or younger. And so this has to get resolved for these folks soon, would be my first request. I know that that probably can't happen tonight. So back to what I think we have under our control tonight, would the developer be willing to come forward and answer some questions that I think would ordinarily have been asked at the planning commission?
I'm going to hold on that, because again, we're talking about lots, and I don't want to get into the discussion about-
Well, I want to ask him about them, about those lots, and I don't know why they are going to a duplex. I don't know details about the kind of finishes that they have. We've seen a artist's rendering of brick that goes from, from ground to roof, but we don't know the quality of that brick. We don't know even the, the plan for the kind of the units, are they going to have full basements or not? How is a modular unit different than a stick-built unit? When these folks bought into a neighborhood that they thought was going to be stick-built luxury custom units, now suddenly it's very different. So even though it's only going from 13 to 12, there are elements that could be very, very different when this is all said and done. And so those would be the kinds of things that would be talked about at a planning commission, and so if we can't send it to the planning commission, then I would like those questions answered now.
Mr. Day, I'm going to go to you. I think those questions, in my opinion, don't, don't address the resolution we're discussing And are they enforceable under the PUD?
Well, now, what the developer has to do is construct buildings that were approved in the PUD process. So unless the PUD process specifically went through inside the type of brick or whatever, the developer can go in and put whatever buildings would qualify under what's already been approved. So in terms of the development requirements, unless it deviates in some way from what was approved in the PUD process originally, and I don't believe it has, then it's, wouldn't be up to either the planning commission or the council to force the developer to deviate on how they're building the buildings.
I'm sorry, could you say that last part again? I didn't, I didn't hear you.
I don't, I wasn't even paying attention to what I was saying. So the PUD process set out, I think they just had the basic line drawings of the buildings, and that was what was approved in the PUD process. So as long as what the developer is building now conforms to what was approved, then, then they're entitled to build whatever was approved. So unless the original PUD specified very certain standards that they had to meet, and I don't believe it specified anything that they are not proposing now, then it wouldn't be an issue for the planning commission to go back and require them to do something that they weren't originally required to do under the PUD.
So all that said, though-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, mayor, I was going to say, all that said, though, basically, as long as the developer indicates, if, if council asks the developer representative to come forward, that they would just be affirming that the construction of the new units matches-
Complies with the requirements of the approved PUD. All right.
If I could, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to-
Please, I am really looking forward to hearing from you.
There, there would be nothing preventing, take, take this whole resubdivision out of the mix, leave it at 13 lots, there's nothing preventing the developer from going to Homeway Homes now.
Okay.
I would kind of argue that it's really out of the planning commission's purview to start talking about construction method types. I think the focus has always been on aesthetics, exterior appearances, we don't get into too many bedrooms, or not enough amenities, or granite countertops, you know, we tend to shy away from those things. The square footages are similar, if not a little larger, on this proposed plan. When I looked at it from the basics of changing from this original construction, we didn't have an assurance that there were going to be high-quality brick on the paper drawing we received in 2005 from the original developer, we don't know. I mean, they're, they're a quality developer, quality, they use quality contractors, and so, you know, we place that same level of trust that these new construction methods will still be high-quality.
But I don't think we've seen whether or not they're going to be of similar size or not.
I, I have, they've shared a floor plan, but again, we don't, you know, get, aside from saying, well, no, that's the wrong floor plan, you've got it all wrong, open concept.
But see, you've seen it, but it's, and that would be the sort of thing that would go through the planning commission. I've seen those packets.
I guess I just respectfully, well, I'm not going to say that information is not in it, but we do counsel developers, you do not have to provide the interior details, it's, it's all about the exterior appearances.
I'm not looking for the finishes, I'm looking for the, the quality exterior, obviously, maintaining the integrity of the neighborhood, maintaining the value of the other homes. So I think everybody sees where I'm probably going with this. I would like to move to send this particular issue back to the planning commission, for there to be full vetting, the way that there ought to have been, 13 to 12, ask all the questions that normally would be asked during that process, on the premise that there are a lot of other moving parts going on here, and even though this particular movement of 13 to 12 may seem minor, when you pull back the lens, there is a lot going on here. Everything from unfinished business of parks and utility screening and common building to potentially reimagining a neighborhood that was once thought to be for a particular age group, and now it's something different. So with that, I would like to make the motion for it to return to the planning commission.
Do we have a second on that motion?
I'd second.
Thank you. Discussion on this motion? Mr. Nord?
Ms. Lorenz, could you explain what 13 to 12 is? You've mentioned that a few times, and I'm not familiar.
That's the number of units.
Oh, that's the number of units, okay, got it.
And the number of lots, we're asking council to authorize, that's the action tonight, is going from 13 lots of the PUD down to 12 lots.
I thought it was a planning commission lingo.
I would ask discussion to go through the chair, please.
All right.
Further on this item, Mr. Preston?
Yeah, I have a question, I think for staff, Mr. Day, if I'm not mistaken, I'd heard you mention procedurally, if council sends us back planning, it goes to planning the exact same question that is before us tonight, which really doesn't address, I think, the spirit of the amendment that was just made. How does this, how does this process work? Is it even possible to do what Ms. Lorenz had moved, and what does that look like?
Merely going back to Plan Commission, so the question before the Plan Commission will be just reducing the lots from 13 to 12. So there may be, somebody may bring up something in a public hearing. But the Plan Commission's, the question before the Plan Commission that they will answer and send back to council with their recommendation is, should the lots go from 13 to 12? It won't be, there is no authority, for instance, on the age restriction. The Plan Commission has no authority to go back and somehow require an age restriction on that property. So that won't be anything that the Plan Commission can address. The other items may be preliminary, but they won't, are tangential to the question. But the only question that will be before the Plan Commission is the reduction of the lots from 13 to 12.
You mentioned the age, age restriction. Is there any reason why the HOA would not be able to put an age restriction in their covenants? And that be, I mean, past legal standing to where that could then be the, you know, the covenant of the neighborhood? If the HOA wanted to take it up, would that be valid?
The HOA has the authority to do that through the covenant process. The town has no part to play in that process. But that is something that they could do, at least legally. I don't know politically how they, if they could do it, but certainly from a legal process, they could do that.
Okay. If the, and this is not a question, just a narrative real quick. If what we would be sending back to planning is the exact same question that is before us tonight, I don't, I don't see the value in just ping-ponging the same question back and forth. And if it doesn't get to a point of addressing some of the larger concerns that were raised here tonight and have been raised before, then if there is an avenue to do that, that should be pursued. If there isn't, and it's not something that we can do, then it's not something that we can do. But I'm not interested in sending the same question back to planning to come back to us, to have this conversation all over again, if it's not going to change what we're actually voting on.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
As far as timing, how's, what's the shortest possible time that this could go back to the Planning Commission? When would they next meet?
They would, they would be eligible to go to, back to Planning Commission for the November meeting.
For which meeting?
The first meeting in November.
So November. So in the meantime, the developer, who was stalled by economic conditions up to this point of doing further construction, would lose the remaining construction time we have in the fall before it would shut down for the, for the winter months.
Potentially.
So residents who are desirous of having the development succeed by adding residents to it would be stymied in that effort if we simply delay this by pushing this back to the Planning Commission, who would then open up a similar discussion to what we're having tonight, only to bring it back to us in November.
This is getting really murky, but one thing I would say back to Mr. Preston's question. You're right. If we, if we send this plat, back to the commission and they just act on it and send it back to you, the only thing I'll say about the action tonight, there is a positive step in this approval process that would mandate the developer to identify a date to go back to Planning Commission to amend this community building issue.
So that is being.
And establish a construction date. I suppose the same thing could happen if it, if it gets pushed back to November and comes back to you at your second meeting in November again. But that is a condition of this plat approval.
The Plan Commission wouldn't consider that. So, I mean, it's either, the developer, I think, and I'm going to jump in that too. I think if the developer was ready to move forward with a plan to amend the PUD and come up with their community building or anything else in terms of changing the planned unit development, then maybe they would package it with this and be more things that the Planning Commission could consider. At this point, however, the developer is just asking for the lot change.
And then one, one last comment. I'm sorry, Mayor. I would also say too, as, as the building and zoning guy, I, I do have the legal authority for a PUD to consider minor changes, and they're very prescriptive. But, and generally it's where you have a reduction in density or you don't compromise parking. And neither of those two situations are building coverage, and those conditions have not been triggered by this. And so from my perspective, I think we're still on solid ground, saying 13 to 12 is a minor change.
We have more, people want to speak, but we seem to get deeper and deeper into the weeds on this. I think we've got some pretty clear decisions to make, and I think we've had enough background on it.
Well.
I'd like to go to a vote. Yes, no?
I have something more to say.
Well, then, everybody does. So I'm going to Mr. McCarthy first and then, did you?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll be, I'll be quick. Some of my notes have already been addressed, I guess. Chief among them, the material change, but I believe Mr. Preston labeled it ping-pong. I'll, I'll use that. I don't know that there's value in that, honestly, in a, in a delay. And I know construction material costs are likely part of this consideration. And so the more we delay, the more we potentially cost the developer and, and the, the community in which they're developing. I think that we've certainly heard the concerns of the community. And I led the Planning Commission process and I've lobbied for it in other circumstances. And I think it's valuable and important to give public voice. I think, again, we've had that opportunity tonight to hear from the community and their concerns, and it would seem that the developer sitting right here has also heard those concerns as well going forward. And the interesting thing out of this discussion, I think valuable, is, is that the age restriction seems to be able to be addressed, though albeit not through the PUD, but on the homeowner's side. So hopefully that's information that the residents are, will find some comfort in, as well as their ability to effect that change, if that's what the majority of that, the group wants to be addressed. So for expediency for the business that the developer's in, and the same exact question going back to Planning Commission, I don't, I don't see the value of sending this back at this time. But I am, I highly value that any changes to the PUD going forward, that our material in nature will have to go through Planning Commission and everybody here and anybody else in the village will get their opportunity to, to get input and ask questions and, and give their thoughts on that. And so thereby those, those rights are safeguarded in material changes going forward. So I'm, I'm not supportive of sending it back.
Ms. Lorenz?
All right.
Then Mr. Nord?
Thank you. You know, I just want to implore my colleagues here to, to think through the reasons to send it to Planning Commission. I know I'm the only one sitting here right now that's, that's lived the Planning Commission for seven years. Good things happen in the Planning Commission, really creative ideas and suggestions and amendments to votes. And so we are missing out on that opportunity by just very narrowly defining this vote tonight as simply going from 13 units to 12 units. Because there is a lot of unfinished business, as it turns out. There is some reimagining that is being considered. And those things would be vetted and heard by the Planning Commission. And the whole purpose of the Planning Commission is to really kind of try to find, that's where so much, I, I loved Planning Commission because so much, you know, public input and democracy actually happens there. And that's where the person sitting out there, homeowner, gets to really be heard. And these people have had to be heard kind of in a really disjointed fashion. They haven't seen the, the designs, or all of them at least. And, and that's where, that's where the good stuff happens is in Planning Commission. And this is not just a matter of returning a server, ping pong. This is about some really substantive conversation that a body like the Planning Commission could hear, should hear about a planned unit development. And I would just implore my colleagues to consider that this would be an important thing. The other thing you learn being on Planning Commission is that it's a delicate dance between doing and being business-friendly to developers. And I applaud you for wanting to continue to develop this PUD. But it's a delicate dance between the developer wanting to develop and us as the, as the city being mindful of our current residents and how we want land developed. And that's the beauty of Planning Commission. And I would really, really want to see this go back there. Thank you, and that's all I'll say.
Mr. Nord?
If we push this back to the Planning Commission, is there a restriction that they can only be asked the question that's before us? I mean, so yes or no? I mean, they can tweak it, can't they?
Well, Planning Commission will only act on the matter that's presented to them for action, which would be this. During the public hearing process, the residents could go on the record with all their concerns.
But the developer is still able to tweak it, you know, by having conversations with the residents and tweak whatever they want to present to us later.
Sure. Developer, and just to be clear, developer can go back to Planning Commission at any time, always to change the plan. Just because they might go through a process to change the plan regarding the community building doesn't mean they can't change something else down the road and go back through the process again.
Sure. So I don't see this as we're just kicking back one question. As Ms. Lorenz said, there's quite a few questions out there. And I see this as an opportunity for the neighbors, the ones that are the most impacted, to talk to the developer, come up with something. You know, if it has to go through the, the planning process, that's, that's the process for that to happen. Because afterwards, it's not going to be as easy. So I see it as an opportunity for more conversation to happen, and the developer would have to speak if this is, you know, going to really be a financial detriment or not. But, you know, that's a question that, that the developer would have to say.
Sure, why not?
I do want to take this last opportunity, at least on the amendment, for me, to level-set this conversation somewhat and keep in the frame of our conversation candy the fact that if the developer didn't want to take the units from 13 down to 12 and just stick with the original 13, none of this conversation would be happening, nothing would be coming to us, it would just be moving forward. Is that right? I mean, there's no reason why they would have to come to get council or town approval. And the, by not going back to planning with, which will be the same question that is on our agenda tonight, that does not preclude this larger conversation from going to planning in the future, should there be a variation. And in fact, this, what we're approving puts a timeline on the community building, which previously none existed. And part of me wonders if the developer wishes they would have just stuck with 13, seeing how much of this conversation went. I am, in general, I am not a fan of us when it is not inherently our role procedurally to insert government into private business and impose more mandates. I would just finish up with, if this gets, if the amendment fails, but this item overall gets approved tonight, the new units will be built under the same plan that all the existing ones were built as well. And those units are great. And I'm sure that we have, I would hope, a lot of homeowners who are very happy and take a lot of pride in the quality of homes and the quality of neighborhood that they have. And there is no reducing of the standards for this next phase in comparison to what has been since the beginning. Thanks.
Cummings?
I might as well, right? I'm, I just have to say, the political grandstanding of tonight has been a joy to watch, to say the least. I think it has been said over and over again, why, why we are here and anything outside of that would have to make its way back to the Planning Commission. To be very honest, if we want to talk about the renderings, at least I've seen both the old renderings and the new renderings. And I personally would have not bought a house from the original renderings. The new renderings actually, with the adjustments to look like what is there today, look a lot better than the original renderings for the houses in which you all live in now. So I say that to say that I believe that there is going to still be a quality product at the end of the day. I just want us to stick with the business of why we're here, and it's not to sit here and grandstand all night. It is to handle the business. We've heard you, I didn't hear, and I may have been wrong, but I heard where you expressed your concerns. But have most of you stated at the end, and the developer met us halfway, or the developer listened to us. And I don't know how, I'm the only one, I don't know if my hearing A told me something different today, but everyone else missed that part. I think there is some opportunities, and I hope that both the HOA, the residents, and the developer can get together on those. But at this point, I think it's time for us to stop the political grandstanding, and I call for the question.
Do we have a second on call for the question?
Second.
Please call the roll. I'm sorry?
Are we voting on the call to question?
Yes.
Yes.
Voting on call to question?
So this is to take the vote?
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
To call the question, aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mayor Kus?
Aye. Please call the vote.
On the amendment. On the amendment.
On the amendment.
Amendment.
Send it back to.
To send it back to planning.
Mr. McCarthy?
No.
Mrs. Lorenz?
To send it back to planning, aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Cummings?
No.
Mr. Preston?
No.
Mayor Kus?
No. We're back to the original issue, approving the resubdivision. Is there further discussion on that item? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
On approving the conditional improvement of this.
Yeah, we're back to the original ordinance.
No.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kus?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Item 8 is an ordinance rezoning in the property in the town of Normal, having to do with the northwest corner of Main Street and I-55.
Move through.
Second.
Is there discussion on this item? Please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kus?
Aye. That ordinance is approved. Item 9 is a resolution approving a site plan for the Loves Travel Stops and Country Stores at the northwest corner of Main Street and I-55.
Move through.
Second.
Is there discussion on this item? Ms. Cummings?
I just wanted to make sure I'm in the, the right one, because I know all of these are kind of lumped together. Let me pull my, my, my pages up. Give me a second here. So this is, this, this is the right one. Wanted to make sure I have the right, the right, the right one pulled up. I apologize. This one would include both the sign in, in the, the, I can't even think at this point, in the ordinance, along with everything else that will go into the, the site. So I know we had some speakers and want to first say thank you for sharing your thoughts and your heart with us tonight as it relates to this particular entity. I also want to say, this is exciting to the town to have this business want to come and be a part of all that's going on. I, and one of the things that did come up, and you have to forgive me, because I think that wasn't where my brain focused on at the time, but it, would it, coming up in the public comment was about, I don't want to say barracks. comment was about, I don't want to say barricade or fence, but some kind of hedging. Is that included in this? How would it be incorporated if it's not at this time? And is this a conversation we could have as it relates to this particular property?
You're correct, Ms. Cummings. The public commenter did indicate that they were seeking a solid fence, indicating, calling, I think referring to that as a barrier. Ms. Davidson, I think invited her to come forward. She can talk a little bit about the distance and such. I think the public commenter also mentioned in an accurate statement that Love's had indicated in their development that they would be installing a fence, but it would be a four-foot fence, and it would be, I believe, chain link around their property. This is a 30-acre site, so on that north property line is part of that whole fence line, for the purpose of catching debris and trying to do their best to make sure trash does not go onto their neighbor's property, which I believe is one of the commenter's concerns. Ms. Davidson, did I miss anything else fence-related?
No, I believe that covers it.
So you'll have to excuse my ignorance here. Can you give me a little bit of, of a visual of what that chain link might look like, in a sense? Or give me an idea of how it will?
Sure, sure. So apparently, this isn't uncommon for Love's. They, on other sites, they've told us they put up a four-foot fence, again, prevents debris from blowing away, because these sites are enormous and often on the edge of a community where it's, well, in central Illinois at least, really windy. Also, it prevents people from, both from leaving the site and wandering onto other property, but also from wandering onto their site. And I know they have specific concerns about keeping people away from the truck area and the tire, the Speedco. I mean, there's just legitimate reasons to just keep everyone separate. As I understand it, it would just look like a chain link fence, a four-foot tall chain link fence, you know, nothing specific, no, like, security wire or anything, just a chain link fence.
And I think, please excuse me, I want to make sure I have my, all my notes covered for this. I feel so discombobulated in this moment, sorry. And then, okay, so then the other, they really didn't talk too much about the sound deafening. Do we, do we, how can I put it? Do we think we'll experience a high level of that? I just, I wanted to make sure I covered all the points that were brought up.
Sure. So I guess a couple of things with the privacy fence. If you're just thinking about a privacy fence for visual screening, the house to the north, which is really the only, it's the only residence within, you know, view, really. And so the idea that a privacy fence is going to do much from about 500 feet away didn't seem to be super effective to us, if you're just talking about the visuals. When it comes to sound barriers, I mean, I'm not a sound engineer, but if you think about, and there are actual people who do these, I mean, when you think about an interstate with like a barrier wall to reduce sound, I mean, these are like, those are concrete walls that are like really thick. They're not, I'm sure there must be some effect on sound from a regular old six-foot privacy fence, but I don't believe that that could possibly make a big difference. And then on the flip side, a privacy fence of that length in this location is just going to be an immediate maintenance problem with wind. You know, you even see it in town. So that's why we weren't supportive of it. But again, I'm not a sound engineer, so I don't want to pretend.
The other comment, and I believe even the commenter made reference to it in terms of the proximity to I-39, I-55, and the like, and most of the residential neighborhoods in North Normal frequently hear interstate traffic, so I think noise is an issue everywhere, depending on wind and such. So again, without having expertise on noise control, I'm not sure a privacy fence would make much of a difference, but again, I'm not, I can't respond to that.
Thank you.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. First question for staff. On the fence topic, in our packet, there is, it's page 9-14, has the compactor screening detail, which to me, it looks like a nice six-foot tall privacy fence.
It really is. Good call.
Explain to me the application of that on this site. Where will it be and what will, how much space, how much real estate will be taken up? How long is it?
I believe that's something more on the scale of like a dumpster enclosure. And so, correct, there is a privacy fence out there. I don't believe that's going to be some massive maintenance problem, because it's really small. It's not going to catch the wind. It's a little more interior to the space. I believe it's on that, kind of towards the north side of the property, but not right on the line. And I don't have the actual site plan handy, but it's, I believe it's just basically in the vicinity of the convenience store and the Speedco.
And then, still thinking that fence line on the north border, has there, there's no requirement for any landscaping by Love's along that northern property line, is there?
There's not. So the code requires screening when you've got a commercial property adjacent to residentially zoned property. As you may have noted in one of the reports, the residential property to the north is actually zoned for commercial. We would require screening if there were a public street, and there isn't. So that's typically where you see the screening requirement, is screening a parking lot from a public street or from a residentially zoned property. So now, there is some landscaping along the north property line.
If hypothetically, it was a residentially zoned property on the north, what kind of landscaping requirements are you talking that would, in that scenario, would even be applicable?
It would be a combination.
Mr. Preston, I'm going to ask you to withdraw that question, because it's moot. There is no residential property there.
I may be, like, I may be a proponent of that level of landscaping in this situation, though it's not required.
Fair enough. Go ahead.
It would be something like a combination of shrubs, hedge, screening, ornamental grasses, trees. It's, you know, we like to have some flexibility, so we're not just saying plant a solid, hedge. Although if that's what someone wanted to do, that would be fine.
From your experience, does that tend to make much of an impact on, as a sound barrier?
Oh, that really, I mean, that really is technical. I mean, to be honest, there's a whole science behind sound and how sound carries, and I just, I'm not that kind of expert. Certainly, you know, visually, plantings can be as effective of a screen as a, as a privacy fence type of structure, but I don't, I really would have a hard time saying how it affects sound. And the house is about 500 feet plus from here, and I'm going to get on like prevailing winds and sound traveling. I'm not really sure, but...
I guess in terms of context, maybe, I'm thinking a little bit about the Sam's Club site, which is half the size of this. I believe this particular site is double the Sam's Club site. Sam's is very close to residential. They have a berm and landscaping on top of the berm. The berm goes almost the whole length from Greenbrier to Hershey, but, you know, that's right adjacent to residential, obviously not the interstate close, very close by, but it is Veterans Parkway and I-55. But I was just thinking in terms of what kind of residential separates, or what kind of landscaping or property changes separate Sam's from the Greenbrier subdivision, and that was a berm with some landscaping along it. But a berm was a significant investment to try to separate those two, and this is a much greater space.
So I would, I don't know what this looks like in terms of action or an amendment, but I would be a proponent for a couple of reasons of, in addition to assuming that the square footage works and there's, in addition to the four-foot chain link, adding some level of landscape requirement along that northern property line. My thought being twofold. One, it addresses some of the concern that we heard from the neighbors to the north, and thank you, sir, for farming. And as someone who is the first generation in my family to not grow up on a farm, since ancestors came over from Scotland, I greatly value that farming is something that is a family business and gets passed through generations, and so thank you guys for both generations being here tonight. I think it addresses some of the concern they raised. I also, this is a point of entry into our community, and in general, we like, and have a history in Normal of wanting things to look nice and look welcoming, and adding a little landscaping along that totally fits into that narrative that we have long prided ourselves on, and I think this would be an example, would be a great opportunity to do so.
I would say that there is landscaping along Linden. That would be required, because it's a public street. My concern with taking that up tonight is we have no realistic acknowledgement of what it would accomplish or what it wouldn't accomplish. And I'd hate to ask a developer to do something that we don't know the outcome of, in terms of noise screening. We just don't know. That's just my opinion on that one. Mr. Nord?
Thank you. Mr. Preston? Possibly. The chain link fence, there's privacy slats, there're little plastic slats that slide down in the fence. I'm sure people have seen those. That might be an option in lieu of landscaping, because it will do a couple of things, too. It will also block headlights from sweeping over to the home. Might not be a big deal when corn's up, but beans, and in the winter, you don't have anything blocking. And the fence is only four-foot tall. Four-foot tall is, you know, very short. People can hop over. It doesn't keep, it doesn't keep people out. So possibly a taller fence would actually keep people out. And with this being, you know, exposed out on the edge of town, I don't see that being a problem. Gosh, I hate to keep doing this, but we've got miles, I mean, literally miles of chain link fence on the edge of town, that managed for years, eight-foot tall, you know. The wind blows through it. We've got some that has privacy slats. You can go along West Washington Street, right by the waste transfer station, you know. That's been there for decades. You know, it can withhold that, but I think that might be a solution to address a lot of the things, because even if you put just a few landscaping elements there, I agree with Ms. Davidson, it's probably not going to block noise, because noise is going to go around from all areas, and we're just not qualified to deal with that. But that might be something that you might consider, because I think that would be a workable solution. And it will block, you know, it'll capture the trash as well, you know, things that are smaller than napkins as well. And, but something else I didn't want us to lose sight of, this company's come in, they haven't asked for any incentives. I mean, I think that we should totally recognize. Economic development does not have to happen solely with incentives from taxpayers. You know, Normal has got so many things to offer, and Love's discovered, you know, location. Why people haven't found this years ago just boggles my mind, because I think it's one of our greatest assets. So I don't know if Love's representatives are here, but thank you for, you know, finding a use that doesn't require incentives. Another piece is, man, the amount of fuel and gas that they're going to sell is totally going to benefit the town. You know, we've got gas tax, local gas tax, state gas tax. On top of that gas tax, the sales tax is on there, too. All that's coming back to Normal. You know, so these are all good things. I understand the reason why they would like the taller sign. You know, it's measured from the, from the ground, but that ground is lower than the elevation of the actual road. So, you know, I recognize that. So, yeah, I mean, I'm glad Love's is doing this. I'm supportive. I would like to see some sort of, gosh, simple privacy slats and possibly a taller fence to address the issues. I grew up on a farm. I understand, and I also understand that development will eventually come and engulf you. So, you know, I was around whenever a Rivian came. We've got fields that got split, and, yeah, so I recognize that.
Mayor? If I could respond, and I don't want to interrupt the next speaker, but just to remind council, in terms of this item that went before the Planning Commission and the requested variances, which are identified, I believe on page 9.4 of your council report, yeah, a couple of the four items that we're talking about in terms of the variances, fence is not one of them. Fence is not required. Love's is installing the fence voluntarily, I believe, because they're very experienced in building these developments. And so they are suggesting that it benefits them to have the fence. And so I guess I'm a little uncomfortable suggesting that we do something more than a fence, or add things to it, or put in the privacy slats for noise, because I'm not sure how we assess if the noise is coming from the development, or I-55, or I-39, or where. And so how do we know if that's going to be effective? And I guess I would suggest that Love's might know, because they're very experienced in putting these structures up and these developments up, kind of along interstates and what maybe works for them. So as we move forward, if council wants to talk about maybe adding some new requirements for the development, then maybe the Love's representative might best be positioned to answer those questions.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I just needed to get some clarification on some items, because I wasn't clear on the fencing, whether or not there are separate sections of fence enclosing segments of the site, like the RV park, the truck service center, and the Gas Island attached restaurant area, or will there be a single fence encircling all of the property?
It's both. The way I understand it, there would be a fence around the entire perimeter, although I don't believe they mean along the Main Street front. That doesn't seem necessary, and it wouldn't be, I don't know, it doesn't seem necessary. But there would also be an internal fence around the truck area, because again, they don't want people wandering in there. That's just not, that's for their own purposes and safety requirements.
And the adjacent property owners in their comments were mentioning concern about 24/7 operation of the tire service center. Do we have any information from Love's about the use of that facility on their properties? And do all of their sites include such a convenience?
I'm not, we have not checked on the hours of operation. I will say, though, that, you know, this would be, this is B1 zoning, and we don't have, it would be a little awkward. Oh, am I off? Okay, it'd be a little awkward to expect one business to have different hours. So as far as I know, it could operate 24/7, although I kind of doubt it. I don't know that the mechanics would be working 24/7.
So the B1 zoning doesn't address hours of operation?
No, I mean, McDonald's, you could be open 24/7, you know.
Okay. And the sign height, when Love's was testing out the need for that, I believe they have some very specific requirements that they seek to attract freeway customers to their location. So what is the distance they are trying to achieve? Did that come out at the planning meeting? Are you familiar with that?
They did not bring up specific, like, number of feet, or quarter of a mile, or anything like that, but they, it was discussed as to how they had done a study of, at which distances can you see the height of the sign over the horizon, over the trees, et cetera, coming from the east, coming from the south. So they do have, certainly they have their math around all of that, but at the Planning Commission, they didn't get into exact number of feet and from this point forward.
And in terms of the light from that, will the sign employ the technology that seeks to drive the light down instead of dispersing it in a wide arc?
So this is going to be an intern, these are like internally lit box signs for the most part, except for, I guess, the portion where it's the price that would change occasionally. But an internally lit box sign, there is no such thing as downlighting, or it's all just internally lit, and it is shining forward through the plastic. So it's, I guess, a matter of like the brightness level. So it would be, it would be like any sign you see, like, again, like a McDonald's.
Okay. And in terms of the alternate of using a lower sign, I think there was discussion in the zoning meeting about the current sign limit is for 75 feet. But in looking at other heights, a cell tower is how, 150 feet?
They can be. I mean, there's certainly, there are multiple things in town that you'll find at different heights, and, yeah, I believe we prepared like a little, like a list for ourselves even to know, you know, how tall are different things in town, like the water tower on Main Street, or a cell tower, so...
And a cell tower has... So, and a cell tower has to be that height in order for the signals to work?
Right. That's, I mean, they pick that basically based on the coverage they're trying to achieve.
And the 75 feet, if someone is driving in town, while some business owners might have desired to have a higher sign to call attention to their specific location, person's driving the speed limit 20, 30, 40 miles an hour on surface streets has plenty of time to see a 75-foot height sign as opposed to someone on the expressway going 70-plus and attempting to switch lanes to get to an exit. Would that be a fair statement?
Yes, I think it's very specific to this kind of business, both the kinds of vehicles they are attracting. I mean, they're attracting trucks and RVs, I mean, very large vehicles that need a lot more advanced notice than the average driver to make a multi-lane change to get off. So that is a major part of the, needing the sign to be visible from a certain distance.
And, and we're unique in our location with the number of trees and some hills that have to be overcome, not like a Pontiac location where it's flat for, for miles around. So attempting to make a sign visible, they've asked for 200 feet to be consistent with, with their strategy of attracting from all three expressways.
Right. I think your last point is probably the most relevant to this site in that unlike a Pontiac or certain other stretches of the interstate, there are interstates coming from multiple directions. So it is hard to achieve a height that hits all of those eyeballs from all the different directions without going this high. And, and I, you know, as we mentioned at the planning commission meeting, it is extremely expensive to have a sign this tall. It's not something you would want to do if you didn't have to. So, I mean, it just gets exponentially more expensive, the taller something that, you know, gets because of just wind loads and all the, you know, the foundation gets bigger. Everything about it is more expensive.
So while we respect the adjacent property owner's concern, we're having to weigh a desire to have the patriarch of the family continue to reside in, in his birthplace as long as he wishes to with, with minor disruption. But we're weighing that against this opportunity to have what is potentially a high revenue commercial company come and help add to the tax revenue and potentially alleviate some of the residential tax burden. And for that, it makes it a difficult decision.
Further on this side? Or Preston?
I'll be real quick in wrapping up. I didn't mention earlier, and I neglected to, this Love's is a big deal for Normal. This will be a big addition to the town. I think that the location is great for it, so thank you. If there's any Love's representatives here or watching or listening, thanks for investing in Normal and thanks to staff for working this through the process to get to planning and then ultimately to us. This is a big deal and will be a great addition for the people.
Mr. McCarthy and then Ms. Lorenz.
I'm just going to make brief comments. I agree with a few of the folks. You know, this is a significant development for the town of Normal. I know it's been in the works for quite a long time. Won't rehash Ms. Smith's comments or her perspectives, but this is, you know, we got a lot to handle these difficult decisions at times and, and they don't always come out favorably for, for both sides of, of the folks in the discussion. But hopefully it'll be, they'll be good neighbors as you hope they will be. And hopefully they'll do their part to, to do what they can to assuage your fears and keep the property secure and safe. It sounds like at least they're taking some measures to try to do that with security cameras and voluntarily fencing a substantial 30-acre property. I have no idea what that costs. I'm assuming it's substantial. But I do appreciate the opportunity and all the staff's work on this. I know it's, they've been at it for a while and, and I do appreciate you guys coming and sharing with us your concerns about the, what appears to be an eventual new neighbor. So thank you.
Ms. Lorenz?
Thank you. I just want to make mention that Love's has a very good reputation as far as a travel center. And I think we should note that and also be grateful that they are selecting our community to do business here. As far as their sign and the rather large variance, you know, the first thing that came to my mind was, oh, gosh, you know, is this setting a precedence? But I think this is a really unique situation where you've got a business that probably would not pour so much money of their marketing budget and promotional budget into a single sign. So the chances of this happening, you know, I just, I just don't see it being a danger in terms of precedent setting. And I just feel like that that's maybe not been stated in any of the materials that we've read, and that's something I just wanted to offer up, that I feel comfortable with this variance, albeit it is large under the circumstances, given the unique kind of business that this is. I think it will be a singular kind of variance and not to be concerned about the precedents that we, that we are setting. Interesting point, too, about just, it happens to be situated in a, in a bit of a low point, and so that may have been the difference between, you know, 150 and 200. I don't know. But even so, it's a big variance, but I'd like for us to feel some level of just good feeling that we're not, we're not setting a big precedence. Thank you.
Mr. Nord?
If you look at packet, packet page nine dash nine.
I'm sorry, what number again?
Packet page nine dash nine. The parking, the semi parking and the, the regular vehicle parking, the part that faces north, the semis pull in and they're pulling head in facing north. So I would like to see some screening there, you know, just privacy slats. And so for the parking, just, just in front of the parking on the north side, I would like to move that we require the fence height to be six foot and have privacy slats just in that area for parking to address the light pollution issue that's going to be sweeping on the residents. This is a 24-hour site, so.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
In a, for clarity, that motion was not just to add the privacy slats, it was also to raise the height of the fence, too, in that area?
Yeah, two foot, from four foot to six foot, because these are big semis coming in. You know, it's not the height of a lot of vehicles. Some of those lights are up higher.
I mean, I'll, I'll second the amendment.
Discussion on the amendment. My opinion on this amendment is we're, we have decided an outcome for something that none of us have any idea of the outcome, that we're, we're providing something that we can guarantee and we're asking a developer to spend significant dollars to do something that we can't even guarantee, but actually we're, I have a very deep concern with that. Further discussion on the amendment? Mr. Nord?
Is the developer here or the representative? Could you speak to that? Is that something that you've encountered before?
Name's Bill Glason with Love's Travel Stops on Oakville City.
Sir, would you, would you come up to, sorry, but I need you to come to a microphone.
Just to be clear, Mayor, what we're talking about is, Mr. Nord, your comment or your, your motion was to increase the fence height to six foot at privacy slats, and you specifically said because of noise, or excuse me, because of light?
Light.
And, but I just point out, that's not going to, that's not going to block a, I mean, six foot doesn't cover a semi.
No, no, but the headlights aren't six foot high.
The trucks that are going to be parking there are going to be backing in, that won't be pulling into the slots along the neighbor's property.
Okay. In the image, it shows that they are.
It just shows parking spaces. It doesn't, does it show in page nine dash nine, it doesn't?
Doesn't show any orientation.
No.
It looks like it does. I mean, there's a line, a line with the same where the cab is at and the.
Can I see the drawing?
I don't know. I'm looking at page nine, packet page nine dash nine. Maybe we have a different page. Mine doesn't show that.
It looks like a cigarette on the drawing with the butt end pointing towards the property line.
But Mr., I guess Mr. Glason has indicated that trucks will back into the spaces. That's their practice. I don't, yeah, I don't know. Does it matter if it's the back of a truck or in front of a truck?
Well, there's still going to be light pollution then as you drive down the lane.
Are you referring to the RV or to the truck parking?
Oh, yeah.
I think he's referring to truck parking.
I'm not sure it's there.
Along the north side of the property.
It's on the far west.
Far west is RV.
Right.
Sorry, here. This will be, that's RV, which will be backing in and this is truck parking.
Ms. Mayor, people can't hear that conversation.
We're violating open meetings. Mr. Nord, could you stop?
It needs to be on the record.
We're in violation of open meetings.
So I think you're referencing the RV area, which is on the west side of the site adjacent to I-39. Is that, is that what you're referencing?
Can you put it on the screen?
No, we can't. We don't have it on the, on the screen.
It is definitely the RV parking on the west side that looks, what you were describing, Ms. Smith.
Okay, so then that would be the RV. What about the?
And the trucks, he's saying, were, are backing in, and those are the ones that would be more parallel to the home.
Both the RVs and the trucks would be backing into the parking spots.
Okay. And as far as like light going out, have you had that issue brought up with other neighbors elsewhere?
You're talking about the lighting for the, the lot lighting that covers whole entire thing or you're talking about for?
Vehicle lighting.
Headlights?
Yeah, headlights.
Like I said, the, the one house that's 500 feet away, I don't think that the headlights are going to be really an issue, but if, if you'd like us to screen a certain portion of that, we can with the slats. Are you talking about an area that would be, are you talking about the RV or the truck parking area?
You know, since you're hearing this is on the record, I would just say if you work with, with the neighbors and if there's an issue, you guys come to an agreement later on that. If there's a problem, would you guys be okay with that?
Yeah, we can, we can, let's, let's get it built and then anything that needs to be done to satisfy, y'all, we're willing to work with it. We've done it in other locations. We've even given money to a neighbor over in Falkville, Alabama, the location I did. Her, was a residential house right across from the travel stop, and we gave her, I think, $2,000 to do window tanning. And I told her, I said, if there's a certain light that's coming in and affecting you, let me know and we'll get it changed. But I think we provided a photometric of the site that all, all the, the side lighting is going down because we don't want to, we're not, don't want to light that cornfield certainly. So we want to keep all the, all the light going down.
Well, thank you very much. I love that Love's is coming in here because you work with the neighbors and you're willing to do things, and I wish more businesses would watch this and do that same sort of thing so the council doesn't have to do it. You guys just work with, work with your neighbors.
Please call the roll.
On the motion?
On the, oh, on the amendment.
I'd like to withdraw that.
Yeah, I'll withdraw in a second.
All right. Discussion on the overall amendment or resolution. Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. Resolution is approved. Item 10 is a resolution conditionally approving a preliminary subdivision plan for the Love's Travel Stop and Country Stores. Motion for approval, please.
Move.
Second.
Discussion on this item. Please call the roll.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The resolution, that resolution is approved. Item 11 is a resolution conditionally approving the final plat of the travel center subdivision.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Discussion on this. Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye.
That resolution is approved. We have no new business. We do have a public commentator who would like to speak on an issue having to do with fire extinguishers, requirements and student apartments, and that would be Claire Wagner. And Ms. Wagner, the same rules apply, three minutes. Have it.
Good evening and thank you for your time and the opportunity to talk. I know it's been a long night, but I really appreciate it. So I am Claire Wagner. I am a recent ISU graduate and a current member of the Normal community, living in 206 North Cottage Avenue with Sammy Apartments. It was only after far too close of a call that I realized my apartment did not have a fire extinguisher. Living in a large student-based apartment with no sprinkler system, I'd expected to find one in one of my dressers, but I was wrong. And with 20 other students in the same sprinklerless building, the only difference between me, my neighbors and the Sugar Creek Apartments that burnt down last semester is that the spark didn't travel. I urge that the Normal Town Council implements a fire extinguisher, a fire extinguisher regulation for student apartments that do not have a sprinkler system put into action within the next three years. Most students do not prioritize a fire extinguisher on their back-to-school list, and even if they did, without regulation, I cannot guarantee that my neighbors do not, that my neighbors will have one or that their fire will not travel into my apartment. My demand, the demand for this essential safety regulation has already gotten the support of over 500 individual students, staff, families, the Normal, the Illinois State University Student Government Association and the Bloomington Normal Tenant Union. I have already heard concerns about students under the influence misusing fire extinguishers. However, implying that the misuse of a fire extinguisher is more important than human life and significant amounts of property damage is grossly insensitive. Additionally, implementing a replacement and damage fine for suspected misuse will eliminate these types of issues. If you're worried about the sober misuse of fire extinguishers, providing a printed-out instruction manual next to the extinguisher can assist with that problem. A bit of research and phone calls have concluded that a fire extinguisher for a small area like my apartment costs about $70 for the extinguisher that has a six-year warranty as well as a yearly inspection. To put this in perspective, the monthly cost per my rent, not including my roommate, is $445. So please do not tell me that this regulation will be expensive when it will cost less than 1% of my yearly rent payment. By allowing these leasing companies to ignore the basic safety requirements of their tenants, you are endangering not only those in the spaces, but the children and families who share living spaces near them and overall neglecting the health, safety and well-being of those who trust you in this community. You're also causing constant worry to the parents of students who do not, who do not know if their child will be put in the face of danger. I am willing to volunteer my time to help you figure out a solution if you would like to reach out to me after this meeting. I will not sit helplessly while the well-being of my friends and the community are constantly put at risk, and I will follow up with you after this with email. I hope that you will do us right and protect us when we are at our most helpless in the face of a growing plague. I look forward to feeling safe in my own home. Thank you.
Before taking a motion for adjournment, are there concerns or comments? Ms. Cummings?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, for this time. I'm quite sure those who this announcement for might be in the bed at this time, but I'm going to put it out there anyways. Maybe there's a grandparent or parent who's still up and still watching. We have now have a great program for our ninth through 11th graders who are in Unit Five schools, which is Normal Community in Normal West, along with University High and Youth Build. It's called Youth on a Mission. And what it does, it will engage you in civic engagement, advocacy, legislation, as well as teen building and leadership development. You will have the opportunity through the course of eight months to learn about the community and present a project to council in April. And it will also give you an opportunity to learn how to do advocacy work for your community at both the state and federal level. So we are looking for students who want to engage in such a thing. If you truly want to have a voice in your community that will actually make a difference, I implore you to sign up for this program. Applications will close on September 27. We still also could use some volunteers, so if you would like to volunteer your time, we ask that you go out there as well and sign up. we ask that you go out there as well and sign up, and you might learn something as well along the way. So it's something that's good for us all, and also for volunteers. That application closes on September 27th as well. So we hope that you find, and this is a way for engagement, and we're really trying to engage our youth who are our future, who we say we do all these things for, but it will be great for us to hear from them directly instead of us telling them what they ought to want. They get to tell us what they see for their future for the town of Normal. And so I leave you with that, and the applications are on our website, www.normal.org.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. I was reminded, I don't know if she's still here, but thank you to Claire for coming and speaking so eloquently on this topic. Also, thank you for staying, you know, almost two and a half hours now from when we began, which is a reminder to me that for individuals like Claire, who is a Normal resident and was talking about town-specific business, I would like, at some point in the future, for us to be able to not force her to wait two and a half hours, but allow her to speak on town business at the start of the meeting, as with items on that night's agenda as well. Again, as long as it's relevant to town business, having all of that up front so that we don't have to make people wait who have serious legitimate concerns and don't know how long a meeting's going to last. Thanks for giving your night, you know, to say that. Appreciate it.
Mr. Nord?
Ms. Lorenz was.
You were actually first, go ahead.
Tomorrow marks the one-year anniversary of this council doubling the local gas tax. So I thought I'd point that out because we've got Love's Truck Stop coming in. Some comments that were made that night, one of the council members said that this tax increase would generate an additional $1 million for our transportation infrastructure needs. Another one said that they wanted to correct some misinformation and that any proceeds from this gas tax would not be used for the underpass. Another council member said that this gas tax has absolutely nothing to do with the underpass, then defined the, that this money would be used for transportation, for transportation infrastructure such as roads, sidewalks, curbs, and ADA stuff. As we've come to learn and know, the local motor fuel tax goes into the general funding, it can be used however we want it, not towards the roads and streets, as some council members had spoke upon, spoke upon. The day after we voted to double the gas tax, WGLT was led to believe, and they reported, and I quote, "Officials said the hike expected to result in $1 million in additional tax revenue for roads and sidewalk repairs." So, you know, they were even led to believe that that money would be used that way, and that's what they reported on. You know, I continue to stand by my statement that the public has been misled to believe that fuel tax dollars are dedicated to fix roads and sidewalks. We've used state gas tax dollars to build recreational bike trails, you know, they, we can use this money for a lot of different things than what is communicated. Now, with the new budget that's coming forward, or that the staff are working on, you know, I'm looking for an equivalent increase in what the local gas tax dollars are that we have taken in to be reflected in road and sidewalk work. And to use, you know, one of the council members' statements from that night, absolutely nothing to do with the underpass. And my second point is, Normal ended the year with a surplus of over $11 million. This is 11 times more money than what was said was needed as the reason for originally doubling that gas tax to get a million dollars. So now that we've got this fantastic truck stop coming in, you know, we're going to bring in much more local gas tax money, and we know we can use it however we want, share it with other departments and things. But with this surplus in revenue, there should be no reason that we increase taxes on our residents, because we already have a surplus, we've got more revenues coming in. So I just want to put on the record that I really don't expect to see, or I don't, I don't expect supporting a gas tax increase in any department, whether it's Water Department or whatnot, because we've shown we can divert this money to fund other areas. So thank you, and I guess happy anniversary.
Ms. Lorenz?
I'm wondering if you could share a copy of that, because I didn't totally understand everything there, if you would, please. But my concerns are twofold. I was, unexpectedly, Mr. Preston made a comment tonight about, unexpected to me at least, about the order of comments and the comments that are not germane to the agenda happening afterwards. I had just been really thinking about that, because we've had in the last couple of months some very pertinent, germane to the town but not to the agenda speakers who have waited till 9:30, sometimes even after 10 o'clock. And there's been three that I can think of just within the last few months. Sweet woman, Mrs. McBurney, that wanted her, that had the concern on Fort Jesse, you know, it still just kind of resonates, she sat here for three hours. Now we have a, you know, a young student who's done the same. So thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Preston, and I think it's, I would join you in your raising up of this issue for us to discuss at some point. I wanted to end on a happy note, and just what I witnessed here tonight in terms of the conversation between business and, and community was incredible, and I think that the headline should be Normal Loves Loves. Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. An unexpected comment, a little bit in response to Mr. Nord's comments. You know, it's, this is not the first time Mr. Nord has unfortunately made public accusations about misappropriation of funds or diversion of funds, and each time he does that publicly, I take the opportunity to challenge him to provide evidence and proof of such diversion of funds and illegal activity. He has yet to be able to do that or provide any proof, despite social media challenges asking him to do so. It's unfortunate that an elected public official who's supposed to be here representing has no compunction about making accusations without any proof. Essentially, it's Washington-style political shenanigans that unfortunately are playing out here in the town of Normal. It's unfortunate that we even have to address it in this body, but here we are again, unfunded allegations somehow magically transform into reality without any shred of proof whatsoever. It's unfortunate. I did want to make, on the positive side, a comment. I'm glad we got to learn that there was a Love's representative, I didn't know that. I always applaud when the developers of projects come to the council to hear the discussion and hear what we have to say. Not all developers do, but I appreciate when you do, you get to hear directly from citizens about what's on their mind and that you're amenable to work with them to, to make it right. I really greatly appreciate that. On the public comment, I just want to, when we get to that conversation, just remember that these folks are citizens, and their agenda item was last, so somebody's got to go last. Somebody's got to go last on an agenda, and our meetings don't seem to be able to get done in anywhere less than two or three or longer hours these days. So some citizens, somebody's going to have to go last. And so whether we put the comment there in front of these folks and they wait a little longer to hear their case, or somebody else, so just remember, somebody's got to go last on the agenda. So, you know, we can talk about who we want to prioritize and make go last, but that's, I look forward to that discussion. On a community-wide note, on October the 9th, there is the Household Hazardous Waste Collection event being held out at the Interstate Center in Bloomington. Participation is open to anybody in the state of Illinois at no cost. It is by appointment only this time, and as a reminder, it's only residential waste, no commercial waste will be accepted at, at the event, and they need lots of volunteers to help out. They're doing an appointment-only control traffic, but you can sign up to drop off Residential Household Hazardous Waste or to volunteer at www.hhwmclean.org, or if you don't have a computer, you can call at 309-468-6449 to get signed up. The Ecology Action website has agreed to host this information, so you can find all that information there as well. And this year, it's a little different. The Household Hazardous Waste Collection is made possible this time in partnership with the Illinois EPA has come on board to help fund this, in addition to the town of Normal, of course, and the city of Bloomington, and McLean County, and the Bloomington Urban Water Reclamation District, who regularly supports that. So check it out. If you've got some old things sitting around in your garage that you need to get rid of, check out the Household Hazardous Waste on October the 9th. Thanks.
Ms. Smith?
This is just more of a public service announcement. The, we are going to change the seasons in this coming few days. It is getting dark earlier. If you don't have a car whose headlights turn on automatically, I'm cautioning people to do that. It's also harvest time. If you're driving the rural roads, be, be forewarned that there may be equipment at those intersections that you're accustomed to breezing through, and ask people to be mindful of driving the speed limit, watching out for agricultural equipment on those roads. And in town, there's a number of construction projects taking place, thankfully, due to some funding that has come through during this pandemic time and using our motor fuel taxes. So just be patient, be, take care that nothing happens to your car, and nothing happens to the workers, and just be aware of that, so.
Ms. Reese, you?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I wasn't following all of your comments, Mr. Nord, but because you were referencing both the local motor fuel tax and the state motor fuel tax, which are two different revenue sources, funding different types of road projects, but the local motor fuel tax resolution says the proceeds of the tax attributable to the increase will fund local transportation infrastructure, including road and bridge construction, repair, maintenance, and continue. So I think what you'll find is that's exactly how those funds are spent. Council has authorized some major road improvement projects, including street surfacing contract with Epple. Council's aware of kind of where we stand with that. So lots of things have been happening. The one thing that has been included with local motor fuel tax dollars, which is paid out of the road and bridge fund, but that includes sidewalks. And I know that you disagree that sidewalks are continued, are considered by, by our budget in terms of a transportation amenity, but the landmark drive sidewalk has been a very significant investment, and if you drive down landmark, you'll see the progress. It's exciting to see what's happening there, and soon we'll be wrapping up, I think, in October, so that's really good. And that also does provide not only ADA accessibility, but opportunity for people to access the bus stop. So I think what council will find as we get into the budget process is we have spent significant dollars on transportation network, including sidewalks as well. The other thing I wanted to mention, Mayor, is a year, a little over a year ago, back in actually March of 2020, council authorized a moratorium on late payment fees and shut-offs associated with utility billing. I just wanted to let council know, kind of bring it to your attention, that we are, we are looking to lift that moratorium in October, which means we will start notifying those customers in our utility billing system of their current status if they have past due accounts, and start working with them on a repayment schedule if appropriate, and if eligible for some assistance programs. So that will be starting to be communicated in the next week or so with our customers, and we'll work closely on trying to get all of the eligible folks appropriate assistance, and then working on payment, a repayment schedule for, for our customers. So I just wanted to put that out there.
I've got a point of order.
One, one set of comments, Mr. Nord.
Well, it's not a comment, it's Ms. Reese had said that I didn't think that.
Mr. Nord, you are out of order. You are out of order. Could I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
Please have your conversation with Ms. Reese afterwards. Please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Let me get my mask on. The microphones are on, stand. Can you wait for a minute? Okay. I just want to make sure I get this in.